First resolution, application Z-0512. Which is, uh, Vessel Development Company, LLC. Commissioners, what's your opinion? Motion by Commissioner Silver, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Castle, roll call.
Commissioner Edie? Commissioner Silva?
Aye.
Commissioner Valdez?
Aye.
Commissioner Calvert?
Aye.
Commissioner Kast?
Aye.
The next resolution is Z-0412. Madam President, activist LLC, we have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Castle, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Calvert, roll call.
Commissioner Edie?
Aye.
Commissioner Silva?
Aye.
Commissioner Valdez?
Aye.
Commissioner Calvert?
Aye.
Commissioner Valdez?
Aye.
And the last one is?
Mr. Chairman. Aye, even though I wasn't called.
I'm sorry.
If you were to call this here, we'd be in that one specifically. We're making this not on here. Out of my resolution, that's a persistent. I'm the only commissioners that are on the resolution.
I did not, I had not listened immediately the last part of the motion.
So you just had to relay for that meeting?
Okay, yes. Thank you.
Okay, so our next resolution is Z-1310, T-Mold. Well, motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Castle, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Edie, roll call.
Commissioner Silva?
Aye.
Commissioner Kast?
Aye.
Commissioner Calvert?
Aye.
Commissioner Dixon?
Aye.
Commissioner Kast?
Roll call, you're aye. Those who were? Uh, we got accepted into this, uh, last meeting. I have a motion to accept the meeting.
Motion to approve of this.
Motion by Commissioner Castle, second. Second by Commissioner Silver, roll call.
Commissioner Castle?
Aye.
Commissioner Silva?
Aye.
Commissioner Edie?
Aye.
Commissioner Valdez? Commissioner Dixon? Commissioner Calvert?
Aye.
Commissioner Kast?
Aye.
Alright, the next application number four is... Is Z... 0612, 608, 66200.
Counselor. Good evening, Mary Call, the law firm recorder in English, representing Hayward Industries. Yeah, okay. This is an application for approval for a 3,400 square foot addition to the existing building. It's used for the private place of car collection of one of the owners of Hayward Industries. They refuse to have it in public. It's on the private home of Hayward Industries. When the building permit, the building mayor got permitted with that, uh, very common issue, to determine that it's non-conforming. MRC's own, uh, white industry office. And this was determined not to fit in those halls. So we're here, uh... It's been determined required various expanded non-conforming use, unfortunately, twice. But I can emphasize, it's private, by the owner, car collection, not in public. So, first, first, uh, Senator Reagan.
Mr. Reagan? Senator Calvert? You're the one from North and East, come on, for the interview. Would you state your name, surname, and your address?
Senator Reagan. Our meeting today, 22/42/2022. You all right? Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Reagan, can I report your relationship to Hayward Industries in this particular project?
Uh, I've been with Hayward Industries for 31 years. I have worked with the Davis collection from Michael Evans since 1985. Mr. Davis?
Mr. Davis, Bones, Hayward Industries.
He's the chairman of it. He's in Happy World Building, with my past history and knowledge of the, uh, Jordanville industry. He turned the collection up in 1985. Do you agree with the keeper, the forester, anything you want to add?
And you've been with Hayward since 1982?
1981.
1981, okay. And Hayward, where's it located?
Our former headquarters located at 620 Division Street, here in this.
Okay, and this property is a property lot, so?
A block lot.
Okay, so, block lot, so it's going along to the east, is it correct?
Well, to the west.
Where the river?
Uh, west.
River like that?
West one.
West one is?
Okay, Hayward, Hayward is one of them.
Uh, now Hayward, there's a very large building, is that correct?
That is correct.
There's a sign that says Survivor.
Yes, that is our current tenant, and we thought that was the owner. We missed that.
Hayward usually uses themselves?
Yes, that is our industrial class, that's the bigger.
What is that what they're doing there?
Uh, world's largest manufacturer, Sweetwood Group, and the second largest manufacturer of plastic industrial class.
Okay.
Second largest manufacturer of industrial plastic power, and a whole different type of thing.
And at some point, can they move the manufacturing from home without it, or do they?
Yes, we moved to Carolinas approximately 20 years ago.
And people did?
Yes.
Uh, but Hayward still owns the property, right there?
Yes, we do.
Okay, now, the building, so, Mr. Davis, Oscar Davis, doesn't end in a short. Head of Hayward Industries, okay. His park collection being on this property, huh? When did that start?
Started back before I got there, I think there's the same one. And Allison, you know, warehouse, perfectly connected.
And at some point, permanent building, you know?
No, the only member in that permanent house was built in 1964 by the London.
Renovated in 2005, it's approximately 40 years. Permanent from city, it's an ex, it's a career office, so. It's on very serious.
This building is a London, London, L-O-N-D-A-N-T, I believe. Was it in the?
Park collection is on the property, I believe.
Yes, right.
And the permanent building, uh, was located in 2007?
Yes, that's right.
But that's not the number of, um...
No, that's right.
Understanding that this time, that is a different.
That's right.
And that's what?
That's right.
Um, and you remind me, the park collection is there, it's, uh... It's not over the park, because that park is a big lot, it's just a lot. And this current proposal is to, the waters that go in, is that current?
Just like possibly 32,000 square feet. And the proposed expansion area, that's where, that's where we plan to equip. Very high-end vehicles, which are very seldom ever will come out again, and will be showing, displaying, grabbing, on purpose. Which is to be wonderful.
And, uh, for mainly vehicles that are currently there, there's more room.
And that would help service.
Now, the plan that the architectural president chose, uh, some areas where there was office, and existing building.
That's right.
Can you explain that, Mr.?
The reasoning behind that was, when the interior and exterior operation of that building commenced in 2007, later in 2008, was Mr. Davis said that time was at the retirement, trying to business over to his son Robert. And he felt at that time, that he was going to leave his corporate office at Division Street. And his one or two days late, and Peter's, he would use his old office in the garage. And he had changed his mind, so he decided to keep his office at, or the headquarters on Division Street. So his office is already made it.
Do you have any?
Yes, I do. I have eight, by ten offices, and has his own real, real records.
Like the collection, uh, Hayward's business.
Okay, there's more local records of that than there are documents.
Conference room?
Conference room has approximately 5,000 of them.
Later to the park.
All of them?
So this, everything that building was related to the private store?
That is true.
How often is it, uh, distributed?
Uh, this December, you're there, please, sir.
Come around.
Just try to succeed it.
Just want to have some of those.
Commissioners, any questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Silva?
Who's meant to go see these cars on the show?
What did you say?
Who is meant to go see the cars on the show? Is it just for him to go to look at? What is the purpose of the show?
That's, you can deem it in your, sure, senior collection.
Is it for him, or is it for other people from outside to look at?
Well, our, our relations are conscious of this, on invitation.
Okay, but it's not in public?
It's not public, not at all. Sure, it's invitation.
And visitors are on occasions, that's very funny, for foreign people. People who visit.
Friends also, I guess, fellow collectors, fellow, one of your clubs.
We're talking to the, the show, show horse, or six.
Right.
I don't know.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, any other question?
Commissioner, I don't know.
Um, Mr. Paul, could you please just summarize what you saw right here? Okay? Just summarize, I read, the hardware that's on this report. What's the reasoning you're here tonight?
The reason is, I'm sure, basically, is that the misuse we just described. But, the architectural test by when to get a turn, the bill, the edition, was told that the use is not permitted. The MRC's own, the last way, the infactory and office use. And because this, I guess the closest thing I could come up with of importance is a parcel. But it's not commercial property. But that little is not permitted to what's being, to be non-conforming. What's there, I mean, pre-dates, I think. Before the MRC zone, like, whenever it was, I think it would have allowed, uh, very housing trucking, the broadways.
That's what it was before trucking?
It was, and, and true, I believe, that it.
Okay, I'm just trying to, because somehow, it might be easier, sort of simple, than, than it really is.
The, but anyway, the MRC zone was determined to not allow this use. And, but there, you know, the drawing and pictures will show, the building that's there now was permitted. As Mr. Davis testified, the parcel never went on top. But, what can it have determined to document about today, and it was something. But we wanted to build a bigger, through this, providing a use. And it's deemed to require various expanded non-conforming use.
We need, sorry, I can play it all, okay? That's pretty much, I just want to begin, that's, that's what we interpret. Kind of, I just want to make sure, that's a square, correct, as a, okay. There are several.
Any other questions, for this witness? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's witness?
Thank you.
Senator Reagan? Yes. My address is 45th Avenue, or, or. And, uh, Mr. DeRosa, you have a license to practice, is it, or? Yes, I am. And you should practice in a group.
Uh, well, I can practice in a community.
Offer him as a work director, expert, none of them are for him.
Here before, before, uh, vice manager before, does this award, so, I would say, my, my first line is. Hold, 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 I get, I get one.
I'm just up the street. And Mr. DeRosa, you have a claim, sir, a claim to work with your race, saying one of the colleagues of yours. You don't have a day, but everyone has a claim, you know, everything that wasn't. I don't know, what makes it better sense, everyone has it. I'll hold, actually, I'll hold. Why don't you, just briefly, work the other test, I mean, I don't need to repeat. But why don't you try to work the, what the showman drawings in, and what the role of project?
Uh, if you turn to sheet T-102, which is the site plan. Okay, and on the site plan, you can see, uh, the existing building, that was renovated back in about 2006. Uh, the existing building is just a simple one-story, unsupervised masonry, garage-looking facility. Uh, has three garage doors, as well as an entrance door. Uh...
That's a garage building.
Masonry-type building. Uh, it is one-story in height, approximately 15 feet to its highest point. Uh, it has a brick facade on the front, and the other facades are painted C and M masonry.
And actually, if we back up a version, is there a arrow for, 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 for this?
Sure.
Another day, of course.
If you turn to the cover sheet, uh, T-101, uh, we have an area map. And, uh, on that area, uh, you can see, uh, the location of the site, which is on Henry Street. The two cross streets are Woodruff Lane and Fairmark Avenue.
Woodruff?
Woodruff Lane, W-O-O-D-R-U-F-F Lane, and Fairmark Avenue.
And looking at that area, the big player, the big building, or?
That is the big building that was mentioned previously.
Yes, the building, the building, or?
Uh, yes, just below it, to the, yes, it's a white, uh, the roof is white. Uh, but that's the, uh, single-story building that is currently used right there.
And you were going to be?
I was on the next sheet of the site plan. Okay, and on the site plan, you can see the outline of a bigger, infactory-type building. Uh, below that, you can see the existing building, which is about 85 hundred square feet.
And in front of it, is there a parking area?
In front of the building is a, uh, a parking area. And again, this particular, the building was renovated, and this parking area was, uh, just recently completed back in 2006, a month or longer ago.
Wait. Then the next sheet?
Uh, the next sheet is a four. Okay.
Four, four, non-alien?
Yes, it's a A201. Uh, again, it's just a single-story. Uh, the gray area is the existing building, which again, is about 85 hundred square feet. Uh, on the north end, which is planned on the right side, you see a couple of support spaces, a couple of offices, a couple of storage rooms, a conference rooms, which was described earlier. And then the balance of the space is just open area, uh, to house the private collection.
And the top of the door, you know, is connected for big building?
There is a, an existing breezeway, an enclosed-type breezeway, hall or breezeway, that is connected to the main building that, uh...
That is exist.
No, there's no existing.
This is what you're connecting, of course.
That is correct. Okay. Um, this plane also shows the proposed expansion. Uh, what we're planning to do is just, uh, expand it in the south of the building. Uh, 40 by 80, 32 hundred square feet.
40 by?
40, uh, 40 by 80, which is 32 hundred square feet. Okay, uh, the addition is going, is proposed to match, uh, all the same materials on the exterior. We're gonna actually use the same exact brick, along the front. Uh, and we are going to, uh, paint the C and U around all, all, uh, the other two sides. Uh, we only propose one access door for egress along the side. Uh, there'll be no other garage doors, or any other type of fenestration in the addition. It's just a, a simple, one-story attachment.
Uh, next video, that?
The next sheet is A2, A501, which shows the elevations. Uh, the top one labeled East elevation, uh, which is pretty much your front elevation. Uh, the top elevation labeled A East elevation, that is pretty much your front, when you, uh, drive along Henry Street. Uh, there are three existing garage doors, uh, to bring cars in and out. Uh, it's a brick facade, the glass canopy, uh, there are two passenger doors. And here, we label out the addition, uh, again, which is, uh, a simple addition that we're going to be using the same materials that we used for the original building.
And the lower floor, which has a one-door addition, on the back?
Yes, uh, labeled South elevation, C, this is the side elevation. Um, again, it'll just be a, a simple C and U block, all painted, uh, with a door for egress, for purposes.
And also have the design, or?
Um, it's just very simple, very basic. Uh, the interior will be sheet rock and painted, um, you know, uh, depending on the light fixtures, uh, now of, of the company, it's a painted concrete floor. So, um, it's there to house cars. Nothing, nothing worse about the building, so.
And the, you should, the word show, or playing, that was, it didn't play in commercials, or?
No, it, it, it is a private show. Uh, for, as testified earlier, for, uh, Mr. Davis, his clients, his associates, partners, uh, other people who in the, uh, car trading industry, which I, uh, but it's for his companies.
Go ahead, Mr.?
Commissioners, any questions, this witness? I, I have mine, although it doesn't show, but I, I have not seen the property, to be honest with you. Is there any landscaping on the property?
Uh...
If our plan has set quotas, and standard, I would see what you can, uh, back here, Mr.?
Uh, if we can turn, uh, I will, if you turn to the back of the site plan, okay? When the property was renovated back in 2006, uh, this particular building was, uh, was renovated. You have a concrete pad in front of it, you have, uh, a patunus surface here, you have some striping. And along this perimeter, there is some landscaping. That is the only landscaping that exists on the entire property. All right, other than that, it's completely in purpose. All right, so, yeah, that's my concern. Um... So we're not increasing any purpose surface, um, but, uh...
Could, is there a possibility we may be put two or three trees, just to soften up the area a little bit, in the air?
Or just, uh?
Yeah, or, or plant, if you can put that down? I'd like to see trees, trees in.
I don't know, I, uh, I'm not just, I'm, I'm, I'm.
I, I think.
I mean, this is a question, cutting concrete?
Yes, I think if there's any question, then we could always have a little bit of landscaping. Um, and again, we are certainly not taking anything away. Uh, we are not increasing any kind of purpose surface at all. Uh, it's, it's all, uh, through, this whole area is reserved by law.
Yeah, and that's why I'd like to see, uh, we can certainly, uh, we can certainly, sorry. Trees yourself, and some terms, or?
I wouldn't mind a little, a little landscaping in front of the addition. And it, it's not meant to wow, it's, it's what's inside.
It was the environment.
Yes, but there's no question we can solve that with some, uh, landscaping, certainly.
Thank you, next witness?
Uh, Mr. Reagan, wow, here.
I just have a question, Captain.
How many tweets would you be restoring?
Exactly how many trees?
Yes, I mean, the chairman suggested some trees to make the, the front of the building look nicer. Not to take a, uh, this, uh, the expansion that you're proposing. Well, what, what exactly, what landscape are you willing to propose, to give?
Well, again, there's landscaping along, uh, in between this curving here, there's existing landscaping. There's, uh, existing landscaping in front of Henry Street here. Um, we can propose some landscaping in front of the building, uh, in front of the addition, we have it. All right, the addition is 40 feet long, so we can put a landscaping there in front of that, to soften it up a little bit. Um, so I'm thinking you could probably put, maybe dozens of trees, okay? And, and some, um, other landscaping, uh, material. Doesn't necessarily have to be just a tree, but you could do a little bit of landscaping land. Uh, so that, this, this area in front of the addition, to soften things up a little bit, would probably be, uh, best place for, I think.
Uh, I just wanted to get the specifics of the landscaping that, that you're willing to propose. And you just, I'll buy it, I'll, 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 I'll.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
John, last name Leon, follow, uh, 388 Washington Road, 3D, several years.
Mister Leon, follow, your license professional plan.
Thank you.
So you're checking this, and Mr. Leon, about, what, what, what we're doing, what you're trying to?
Okay, honor, I just can't get that while, you know, the witness is finishing up, uh, to expedite everything. A photo packet for the board, and if you want, we'll just go over that quickly with you, and then we'll fill in with the proofs. Uh, you can have it as an exhibit, or whatever you want.
No, this is, this is a trick work, I won't get far. That, um...
Uh, it's, uh, it's a photo packet, uh, prepared by me, uh, that includes two, uh, Aaron Matthews, and then, uh, Aiden Ryan, I think it's Ryan, eight photographs. Uh, first page, you will?
Uh, the cover is getting made, and, 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 that's correct. And that is application to go 612 for Hayward Industries. Okay.
First page is just an area that's located nowhere near the, between Flank and Fairmark Avenue, about half-way between, on Henry Street, uh, east of 109, Spring Street. Next page is a, uh, shows a recent area, uh, in 3D. And if you look to the upper left-hand quadrant, that's where you have the existing structure that the architect was talking about. Kind of that square structure in the upper left-hand quadrant, as in front of it, between Henry Street and the building, there's a parking area that's surrounded by some landscaping material, and some of it is already, uh, approximately 10 parking spaces, I believe. Uh, so it shows you, uh, the, the area, surrounding area is, uh, industrial, uh, there's a beef, uh, beef plant on the other side of the street, trucking, uh, use on the other side of the street. Uh, survival plant is behind there, that does window manufacturing. To the south here is a lot, pre-recycling facility, but enough, it's, you know, pretty much at the end here. Uh, you would not notice this building if you go out there. Uh, if you look at the next page, uh, this is taken from the street, uh, there's a gated system, intercom, uh, you know, and some other information there, I guess, uh, it's sanctioned doors, so you can't get in there without, you know, getting authority to go in. Uh, next, uh, picture is, uh, 628 Henry Street, uh, shows the mailbox, and there's an intercom there, so it's totally controlled. Uh, it's not in public, the next, it's a little darker, I apologize for that, but it's showing that facade, and you see this that facade, and that's where the addition will take place. The next page is the last one that shows the building again, so the left, where the addition would be. That's forty by eighty.
And then that base, that showed the doorway edge, it's.
Yes, and then the windows that are parvoral, on the right edge there. Okay. In, in terms of, we just talked about the surrounding building area, it's totally industrial, master plan, 2006, talks about having locations for the development, and the best suited areas. I think this is the best suited area, it's got previous pass as a, as a non-conform use, it's, the car use or car storage is there now, it's in the manufacturing research and commercial zone, which I believe was, came online in the ordinances in 2000, I believe it was, if I'm not mistaken. I believe it's particularly suitable, because there is a car use that's been there, it's been pre-existing, since Hayward's been in the business there since 1964, and prior to that, another owner, some other car storage, photo storage. It promotes, causes objectives of the master plan, and it's functional, it's smart of use, incidental development. It's using a property that's totally previous and still using it, rather than putting that somewhere in the suburbs. Special reasons, I would say, that the application provides further desirable environment, visual environment, the application will provide sufficient space, appropriate areas for a lot of different uses. This is a different use, not many people would think about having this as a use, even if it's been in the work since we have it stored, you know, it's not a car museum, it's something that's totally, it meets the native criteria of life extension, there's no substantial detriment to the public good. No substantial detriment to the public good, the area will be somewhat aesthetic, but just non-conform use, and there's no impact. In a year or two, you won't even notice that, that expansion, blending because of the public building being so large. There's no substantial impairment to the purpose and intent of the master plan or zone plan, it is what it is, it's been there, there are additional improvements that are being made, those were continued, and it has added parking, in terms of what it means for the private sector of this, for this car collector. I think that covers everything, in terms of if, I don't think we need any parking there, and so if it is determined, I would cover it with just what I undersee too, in terms of benefits derived outweigh the detriment.
And your visitor to the site, and the.
On the visit to the site, yes.
You're on the, you're on the.
Survivor building is occupied, there is a lot, to the north of the building, there's a B2 that has a truck depot, trucks, piers, and there is equipment in there and material that looks like it's, it's being used.
And are there any overflow parking, cars that were in the future?
No, it's, it's mostly trucks, and I would assume trucks go out and come back, you know, it's, there's, this property, I think, is open angle, fifty-five hundred square feet, and then there's four, three or four more acres surrounded, mostly which have large one-hundred and five, that's where we're built, they used to be.
And the parking required for the MRC zone, is it a, on the side, is it?
Yes.
But this is the genuine. And you heard the testimony from Mr. Rad, just to use, to say, is there any parking for anyone?
No, because it's very limited use, it's only my invitation, it's only several people and nothing more.
Now, did you, you're saying, did you run into Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Did you talk to him?
Yes, I did talk to him, Mr. Gallo, this morning, touch base, and I don't have any issue with his comments.
Now, there were also comment, more comments on the city park.
Yes.
Now, there was a comment, she, some of the way over by the side of the park.
Yes, there was, I was certain. I mentioned that, Mr. Gallo, and, you know, all against the for himself, there are sidewalks across the street, and again, in this situation, people who visit, if they come to visit, they'll be coming in a car, they'll be using the sidewalks, and it's, it's really not necessary, and mostly beyond the curb, it has previous material, but on the sidewalks, they don't, they don't give this, but no rights to make a district walking around.
Any questions, Commissioners? Do you have any problems?
No, I'm sorry. It's a minor, speaking, I want to share now, phone calls there, and we're going to ask the lady.
Are there any members of the public wishing to address this board, this application? From over there. Seeing none, we're going to close the forecourt section. Commissioners, if you'd like.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Castor.
This is a simple application. I have nothing to say, but I don't have any problems with it. As long as the applicant complied with his promise, and your request to enhance the landscape, and to install those twelve trees that he indicated he would install, thank you.
Thank you, that's a question of health.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think it's valid, the application, it's an area I feel of purpose for the for the suit. Fortunately, there is no designation, there's a car storage, so it looks like it's a MRC zone, so.
Good luck. Commissioner, Reverend Dixon? Commissioner Galvez?
I would, I would, I would, I would, I would.
Commissioner Sylva?
I just want to make a comment, I'm really short.
All said, I also have a problem with that agent, so do I have a motion?
Motion?
A motion to approve by Commissioner Sylva, second by Commissioner Castor, roll call.
Commissioner Castor?
Aye.
Commissioner Sylva, the last, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Galvez?
Commissioner Sylva?
I just want to make a comment, I'm really short.
All said, I also have a problem with that agent, so do I have a motion?
Motion?
A motion to approve by Commissioner Sylva, second by Commissioner Castor, roll call.
Commissioner Castor?
Aye.
Commissioner Sylva, the last, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Galvez?
Aye.
Commissioner Galvez?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I assume you're, you're, you're.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Well, there's someone, the business force board, do I have a motion to return? Motion by Commissioner Sylva, the second. Second by Commissioner Galvez, all the favor.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.